Here.
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 Wonderful, thank you, and with all council meetings, we'll open with a moment of silent prayer. Amen. Now, if you'll all please rise and join in to the same pledge of allegiance to the American flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Want to welcome everybody to the regularly scheduled meeting of the Bel Air City Council. We're in August already. Councilmember Lee did communicate with me earlier today that he had a flight delay and didn't sound like another flight delay, so he will try to join us if he can, but we'll see. Airlines sometimes, so. Do you want to go ahead and get started with the meeting? The first thing before council this evening is the consent agenda, which consists simply of the minutes of the July 21st, 2015 city council meeting.
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Councilmember McDonald.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda as listed and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
First and second, are there any questions or comments? All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, signed. Moving right along, next is discussion and approval of appropriations ordinance 15-15. This is in the amount of $645,154.13.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve appropriations ordinance 15-15.
Second.
First and second. Are there questions or comments?
Could we have some indication as to what this is being paid to and for appropriations?
Just in general, or?
In particular. Appropriations ordinance 15-15, the amount of $645,154.13 is being paid out for?
Well, just the entire appropriations ordinance for all of the different things that are paid out. And what is, we have the appropriation ordinance each month, or every two weeks, that our finance director presents. So for those of you listening at home, this is where we actually get a detailed listing of every penny that goes out under, and that's why, with the budget to that, and that's why I always like to say "and 13 cents", because, you know, it is down to the penny. So I think that's what Councilmember McDonald's asking about, and that's what this is for. So anything, including payroll, including supplies, including debt services, and on and on and on, is in the appropriations ordinance. And I should tell any citizens at home, if they ever want to see that, every single one of them is online.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed. City requested appearances. I have one in front of me. Mr. Jim Benegy? Benage, I beg your pardon. If you would come to the podium, please. And Mr. Benage lives at 4437 Rushwood Court, and he has asked to address council tonight, so we welcome you, and...
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. I got a fairly simple request. I am a member of Church of the Resurrection, and we learned a few weeks ago that the city of Bel Air has no means for a fireworks permit for professional fireworks, for special events, you know. And so, we, like, I'm not representing the church so much as, as much as I am a citizen. Request that we, that the council look at amending the fireworks ordinance to allow for professional fireworks with a, with a special permit for special occasions. Church of the Resurrection is, you may know, going to be celebrating its 50th year here in September. I don't know that they'll be asking for a permit for that, for that occasion, but it would be, it would be nice for any organization or, or people who have a reason that they might want to have a fireworks permit, that the city have that provision in the ordinance. Probably would be rarely used, but, you know, right now, you don't, there's no provision. Most, most communities have such a provision in their, their city ordinances, so it's like to ask that you consider making that adjustment or amendment.
Wonderful, I appreciate you bringing that to our attention. Just again, for some background, there was a Resurrection Church wanted, had the big celebration, wanted to have fireworks, and didn't have the permit for that. This is a, the city has the ability to modify the ordinance relating to fireworks, and could include special event fireworks if so desired, but that's going to have to be by the council. I'll, I'll tell you, fireworks is an extremely hot topic. We changed our ordinance in 2000, no pun intended. I just realized as I said that.
That day's article here we go today.
It was in, in 2009 when the current fireworks ordinance was approved, and we've actually heard from a couple of council members up here that indicated they'd heard complaints about fireworks, and a couple of us did not. So it's just one of those back and forth, but there's a great deal of debate on allowing fireworks, and, you know, for even the sale and then for the special permit, but I certainly think that's something we could take under consideration for the city. So I thank you for bringing that to our attention. Councilmembers have any questions, or? Wonderful.
Well, thank you.
I think having your 50th anniversary is certainly cause for celebration, and we love to hear from citizens, so thank you very much for bringing this to our attention.
You're certainly welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, your time.
Appreciate you being here. Next, we'll move to citizens' concerns. If there's anyone here, anyone else in the audience wishing to address council, seeing none, I'm going to move into our proposed 2016 budget presentation. And we'll have it, turn it over to Michelle before I do that, just to let everybody know. At the July 21st regular meeting, council voted to publish the 2016 budget with cuts and set a public hearing for the August 4th regular meeting, which is today. This is all stuff that we have to do per state statute. Our finance director, Michelle, has prepared a PowerPoint. She's going to share that with the citizens and with us for the 2016 budget, including revenues and expenditures for the various funds, so.
Thank you, Mayor, for that intro. There's not much new this year, which is a good thing. Just kind of wanted to go over this for the citizens. As you said, this was approved by council and then published in the local paper for the public hearings. We have five funds that are budgeted for within the city. Only one is tax funded, that's the general fund. And then we also have four non-budgeted funds that are included on the documentation for the budget, but we don't have to approve a budget for them. The goals, as always, these are pretty consistent with the last couple of years. No mill levy increase. This will be the fourth year in a row that we will not be seeking a mill levy increase. Continue to look for ways to keep costs down and reorganize while still delivering effective public services. We couldn't get much lower than the level we had to cut to in 2011 and '12, so we're still kind of in rebuilding years. We are still identifying capital needs, equipment needs, to catch up from those years again. We are ensuring that all annual debt service payments are budgeted and paid for from the correct funds, including the substantial land debt payment that the city has. And one thing that the citizens may not be aware of, at the June workshop, staff was asked to come up with one version that had a 10% cut in the general fund commodities and contractuals. And so this point, this PowerPoint just has both of those examples in there, so the citizens are aware of the background behind the discussion from the last meeting. Mill levy for 2016 will remain at 20, I'm sorry, 45.73, which is what it's been at for a few years now. You can see where that puts us in relation to everybody else. These are the 2015 mill levy numbers, so we're not sure what everybody else is proposing for '16. But if you look at some of the other suburbs around here that we compete with, we are pretty low. We're very competitive as far as our mill levy. Our property tax revenue, we have seen a 7.45% increase in assessed valuation, which is the largest I've seen since I've been here. Mayor, as you mentioned last meeting, there's dirt moving, and that's what this is. These are new houses hitting the tax rolls, new businesses, so it's exciting to see it, and we hope it continues. That just means that we will bring in more tax revenue in '16 without an actual mill levy increase. General fund revenue, we're conservative in our forecasting. We don't try to put bigger numbers than we actually expect to see. We are including $280,000 of revenue from residential land sales. Not sure if we'll actually meet that, but we've kept that in there for the last couple of years in order to reduce having to raise the mill, so we keep that plug-in in there. We do have increased revenue from court fines now that we're back up to a mostly full police staff, which is nice. Permits are increasing with the amount of building going on, and sales tax revenue and franchise fees are continuing to increase every year. The total projected new revenue is 5.1 million. This just shows a breakdown of where our revenue comes from. You can see the majority of it is property tax, and then the other is county sales tax. That's the majority of it. For expenditures, 3.1 million goes right back out to public building commission, land debt expenses. So that is 50% of all of our expenditures, 60% of our new revenues. 1.1 million of that is for the debt service payment on the industrial land that was refinanced in 2010. That payment has gone down 130,000 a year because we've been able to make so many principal prepayments. So the more we prepay from the land that we sell, the more you're going to see that number decrease. Special assessments and taxes, again, are a big hit on all the city-owned land. That number did increase pretty substantially from last year by 180,000, and that is just to allow for a cushion for the specials that are going to spread in Sunflower Commerce Park Phase 1. They will not be payable until next year, and hopefully by that point, the city won't own that much of it, but this gives us the budget authority in case we still do. Then again, 3.51 is for City Hall and the pool debt service payments. 263,000 for other general obligation bond debt service payments, and then there is 75,000 for contractual expenses. That $550,000 that's in there is budget authority for principal prepayment. 50% of the rest of the expenditure budget covers all general fund operating expenses. These are the two versions that were proposed for 2016 operating costs in the general fund departments. They're very similar. The one on the revised column has the 10% cut in commodities and contractuals, which is the version that was approved at the last meeting. This just shows it a little easier. The blue side, that's land. Orange is PD, the gray next to it is admin, recreation is yellow. Those other colors also include some transfers that are going out, which is about 8%. So 44% total of our general fund budget actually covers general fund operating expenses. Some of the highlights for this year, we are transferring 200,000 to the street fund. The sales tax that was proposed on the November ballot was expected to bring in about 200,000 a year, and that did not pass. So for this year, we are planning to transfer 200,000 over. We hope that can continue in the future, but we're not sure at this point. We are again going to transfer 150,000 to capital improvement and 100,000 to equipment reserve, which is the same level as this year. As I noted before, the land interest payment was reduced by 130,000 thanks to principal prepayments. We did include 30,000 for safety surfacing at Bel Air Park and $15,000 for updated equipment at the rec center. That's it for general. The water fund, just to give everybody a background, we partner with Park City for the Chisholm Creek Utility Authority. 600,000 of what we pay out every year is annual debt service payments for the equipment, everything at CCUA. $400,000 we pay for water treatment operations at CCUA. And then we are also a contracted wholesale customer with the city of Wichita, and we're anticipating that to cost 475,000 for next year, even though we're not sure what they'll end up doing with their rates. Just to give you a visual, that shows that most of our revenue comes from water sales. We're expecting to bring in just a little over 2 million. The expenditure budget is 2.1 million. Most of that is debt service and the cost of water. 17% actually goes to cover all operations and staff. Sewer fund is basically the same setup as water. We are a partner with CCUA in that as well. This one has a little extra included for next year for debt service, because there are talks being had about additional capital improvements over there, so we're budgeting for 740,000 in debt service payments and $405,000 in wastewater treatment expenses. And CCUA does all of Bel Air's wastewater treatment. We don't contract with Wichita or anybody else. We expect to bring in about 1.7 million in the sewer fund, again, mostly from sewer charges. The expenditure budget, about 1.8 million. 55% of that is debt service, 22% is treatment, and 23% covers the rest of it. The street fund, we're happy we can transfer in that 200,000 this year. That'll bring our total revenues to about 450,000. We get about 250 from state and highway fuel, state and county highway fuel taxes. Our largest expenses are street repair and improvements, and we're expecting to spend about 375,000 next year. The bond and interest fund, all of the money that comes in there is from special assessments and transfers from other city facilities for city-at-large portions of bonds that are currently outstanding. We're expecting about 1.9 million in specials and about 700,000 in transfers to bring the revenue to 2.6 million. The expenditures are expected to balance out and equal the revenues. So the summary for all of them. That 2016 revised version is what was approved and what was published. That is the maximum amount that the city can set the budget at for 2016. So what's left in our timeline is to have a council workshop next week. Then the budget with any changes that are recommended after the workshop will be presented to council on August 18th for adoption, and then it is due to be submitted to Sedgwick County by August 25th.
Wonderful, thank you so much. And as Michelle pointed out, we have the state statutes we have to follow. It requires that we have a proposed budget be published and a public hearing held. I am now opening that public hearing if there are any citizens that wish to address council with any concerns or comments they have on the proposed budget. We just opened an, open meeting, so we can do that. Do want to let everybody know, there's no act, we will not take any action on the budget. We do have one more workshop before it is actually finalized, if we want to go over anything there, but there's not much really we can do there. We can, you know, we can reduce more things if we want, but nothing can be increased. And then final adoption takes place at the August 18th meeting. So again, to let everybody know, this is the budget process that was published at our last meeting. It's out there, anybody can look at it, and if somebody wants to address council, they may do so at this point. Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
May I make a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Public hearing is closed.
Mayor.
Yes.
May I ask?
Absolutely.
Michelle, thank you very much for all your hard work on that budget and the good presentation there. I just wondered, is that PowerPoint going to be available to people online?
Yes, it'll be posted online.
Okay, great. Because sometimes that's easier for people to see it in a PowerPoint like that than to go through all the numbers that you have to go through so tediously.
There is a, there's a tab on the left-hand side of the webpage that says budget.
Okay, on the left-hand side of the webpage. Because we need to get you a microphone, because not everybody can always hear what you say.
The other thing too, just to point out for council and everybody, we do have one more workshop where we will go over it again as a body, and that is taped, and that is live, and while it's not quote-unquote a public hearing, it is open to the public. If anybody wants to come and sit in and listen to us talk about that, they're more than welcome. So again, try to be as transparent as we can with everybody, so. Okay. We will move on to reports. I have a no formal report tonight. Do want to let everybody know, I, the reason I'm looking a little disheveled is I came from a meeting this morning in Garden City and went to the Neighbor Night Out where, and it's hot, and especially when you realize you're showing black pants and a shirt and tie. Everybody else is there. But I really did appreciate seeing a number of our city employees there, specifically Jamie and Michelle and Tristan, and I think just about every single one of our police members were there. The trucks were the Sedgwick County Fire EMS. Kansas Highway Patrol was there. We had a couple of other vendors, Bouncy House, and I think it's still going on for a few more minutes at the Sedgwick County Firehouse until 8 o'clock this evening, I believe. There are hot dogs and snow cones and goodies for the kids. So I was really excited to see such a big turnout there, and Chief Hattaberry even introduced me to a family who just moved here from Minnesota, and it's kind of their first thing out, and they were telling me how much they really enjoy the community. And then I want to share with the entire governing body, the city has received two letters that are identical only with different contact information. I will make sure that any members of council can get a copy of this. If they want, please just let me know afterwards. But it's from the League of Kansas Municipalities, which we are a member of, and I know at a workshop we talked several months ago about wanting to really be involved in, you know, the way they're looking out for us. And it says, Dear Bel Air Governing Body, about a month ago, the Kansas Legislature adjourned after an extremely long and tedious session. Legislators addressed a number of issues affecting city governments, including the property tax cap and changes to local elections. The League would like to strongly encourage each governing body member to reach out and thank their legislatures for their service and support of local government. And then it says listed below, and then I have the contact information on this letter for Senator Ty Masterson and Representative Steve Brunk, and this one for Senator Carolyn McGinn and for Representative Houston. And so again, we can make that available depending on which side of Woodlawn you live on in Bel Air for the council members, but I definitely want to make everybody aware of that. And with that, I will go ahead and start with Councilmember Becker.
Thank you, Mayor. The main thing I wanted to mention tonight is just to remind everybody of our Hot Dogs Pool Party coming up on Monday, and that's a wonderful fun event. We've had real good attendance. When we've done this in the past, bring your dog to the pool and let them get in there and swim around and have a good time and meet your friends and neighbors here in Bel Air. There'll be free treats for the first 40 dogs. The hairy sofa, Heartland Plan Stay, the Dog Treatery, Century Manufacturing. We'll be providing some prizes for the competition that night. There'll be food vendors, so it's really going to be a fun night, and you'll probably want to add some more to that, Mayor, if I've forgotten anything. But we do encourage you to come, so put that on your calendar for Monday night.
Sure, and let everybody know, the city of Bel Air will have a, an employee, I think it's going to be Tristan, will be on the Bretton Sierra Show Thursday afternoon, and also on the Bretton Tracy Radio Show Thursday morning, promoting it. We've got flyers out at different vendors, and there's been stuff out, so yeah, please come, and we'll get lucky in the pool this year. I'm determined to do it, we'll see. Do you have anything else?
Just having fun contests, you might elaborate on that a little bit, or?
Yeah, and this is the best part this year, is the committee has found other judges. Because there's nothing worse than having to tell a little kid that their dog did not win. So I'm releasing that burden to three other, God bless them. And we'll have contests, and there will be contests for the hair, and you're going to have to help me out here, Mrs. Becker, too. Harriest.
I passed the...
Harriest dog, smallest dog, largest dog, and best trick, best dog trick. I think there might be, oh, best dressed.
Oh, yes.
Best dressed, so that'd be a costume contest.
That's what you need to know about ahead of time, so you can make sure your dog is the best dressed one there.
And I'd like to encourage everyone, even if you don't have a four-legged friend, come on out.
Yeah, it's a fun party.
It's a lot of fun. You can meet a lot of your neighbors, and if you don't have a four-legged friend, we have three rescue groups that will have dogs looking for forever homes. I'm looking at you, Mrs. O'Donnell. So we'll do that.
Thank you, though.
Thank you. With that, Councilmember O'Donnell.
I'm sure it will be great. I don't need a dog, though, thank you. I did want to just echo what Dr. Becker said. Thank you for that PowerPoint and the great job you did, and while we were sitting here, I clicked on, and that budget did come up really easy, so. Thank you, though. Yeah, I appreciate, the webpage is so easy to use now, so. And with that, I have no other report. Thank you, Mayor.
Council President McDonald.
I'd like to thank the mayor for his report on National Night Out at the county fire department, and it seems that the mayor and I, as members of the local Lions Club, mentioned Lions once or twice at each council meeting, and I should point out that the Lions were responsible for setting up the National Night Out, and a lot of members should have been there. I was unable to attend myself, and, but that ends my report, and again, thanks for the mayor for advising everybody of that particular event this evening.
Absolutely, yes, I am a dues-paying member of the Lions Club, but I'm very appreciative of everything they do, so.
Well, everything's been reported, so just ditto.
Okay. All right, with that, we'll move on to city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple items. The, at your desk tonight was a copy of the 2014 audit, and it's just for you to take home and review. We will have our auditors at the next council meeting to actually do a formal presentation and ask any questions that you may have and such. But that's your copy to take and read, and so if you have some questions, they'll be here to answer those. The brush site's open this Saturday, so if anybody's doing any tree trimming, that'll be open. We've got a lot of people really interested in adopting fire hydrants. There's a lot of pictures on the PowerPoint earlier, there was a lot of pictures, and we're tweeting and Facebooking them out, some really cute ones, it's getting a lot of fun, and a lot of people are getting interested in that. And, and then again, the Hot Dogs Pool Party is Monday, and if they have any questions, it's on the website, all the details, there's flyers around town. It was in the newsletter that the city puts out. By the way, if citizens aren't receiving that, we put out a monthly newsletter that's just specific to what's happening in Bel Air. I know everybody gets the breeze, but in an effort to save costs, we produce it and then email it out. So if anybody would like that, we've got quite a bit of people that receive it by email, but certainly let someone here at City Hall know that they would like to receive that, and we'll send them an email out, and it's got a lot of good information in it. Some of it's the same that's in the breeze, some of it's a little different, too. So I just want to remind citizens at home to make sure that they're getting that email to them, so. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. With that, we'll move right along. The first thing under ordinance resolutions and final actions requires no action tonight. Do have a three mayoral appointments that are coming up. There's been some questions up here about the policy, and the city policy requires that the mayor give one week notice to council prior to the appointments. However, some council members have requested I give two weeks' notice, and I'm certainly going to do that if I can. So that's what we're doing tonight, and these are three members of the utility advisory committee that have already served, so just kind of reappointments, and no one knew, of Dan Broyles, Bill Moss, and Art Tenbrink. And so that'll be before council at the next meeting to approve those three. So just want to bring that up. Then the next thing, which will require action, is the consideration of municipal advisory services agreement. This is with Columbia Capital for financing. Most of you guys, everybody up here knows, we've been working with Springstead for a number of years. Most of you guys, everybody up here knows, we've been working with Springstead for a number of years. And so, this is a proposal for a change that I would encourage council to adopt tonight. The city uses a financial advisor. We do this to assist staff, as well as those of us up here with development, marketing, and selling of the temp notes, and as well as bonds for various projects that we have debt on. And the financial advisor aids in special assessment calculations, as well as tracking debt as it relates to the city's debt ceiling. Been here when they've come, and hey, now's the time to sell, now's the time to hold tight or whatever. But like I said, there's been some personnel changes with Springstead. So, since we've been there for five years and with the personnel changes, the people that we've been working with since they have moved on, city staff thought it was a good time to request proposals. Again, just make sure, doing our homework, making sure we're getting the best bang for our buck and everything. And as a result, proposals and extensive interviews, the staff recommends selecting Columbia Capital as the city's financial advisor. And actually, we do have Jeff White, who is the principal of Columbia Capital. He is here this evening. If anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to call him up. But I do recommend moving forward with Columbia Capital as the new financial advisor, since rates are comparable to Springstead and Columbia Capital is headquartered in Kansas. That's something else I want to point out, and staff feels very comfortable with he and his firm as well. That's before you this evening. Does anybody like to ask Mr. White any questions? Can I wave to him?
I do appreciate that Representative from that particular facility is here to talk to us. I don't have any questions. I read the staff's report, and I'm satisfied that they have selected a primary business in that field.
If he would, Mr. Mayor, if he just wants to come up and so he could introduce himself to us, would that be okay?
Yeah, absolutely.
Since he came?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Jeff White with Columbia Capital. It's an honor to be here, and thank you very much for the introduction to come up. I will give you the nickel tour of the firm. Columbia Capital was actually founded in 1996 by two gentlemen that considered themselves to be recovering investment bankers. And they founded Columbia Capital as an independent financial and investment advisor because they were tired of the transaction-by-transaction nature of investment banking. They wanted to engage with their clients over the long term to provide quality financial and investment advice. So, the firm's very first engagement in 1996 was writing an investment policy for the city of St. Louis. Since then, the firm has grown to ten employees. We've advised on 525 transactions representing about $30 billion in bonds, including about $8 billion of issuance here in Kansas. We are primarily based here in Kansas. Nine of the firm's ten employees work out of Overland Park. We do work all over the country, but it's really, really gratifying to have the opportunity to work close to home. It's nice not to be on a plane. My colleague Kelsey was, and business partner, was flying home from Chicago tonight and got diverted. I got a text from her. She was headed to Tulsa for lord knows how long tonight. Kansas City's in the midst of storms this evening. We do work with a number of other Kansas communities that have very similar challenges as the city, similar opportunities, similar sizes. I see the land banks on your agenda today. Actually, our client Junction City's been a leader in the use of that land banking mechanism. And it's become quite a tool for them, and I look forward to seeing how you use it here. So, we're very excited to be your staff's recommendation. There's really kind of two hallmarks of our firm. The first is that we work together as a team. So, I mentioned 525 transactions, $30 billion. The team that will be involved, working for the city, was involved in substantially all of those transactions. We bring that expertise, working all over the country here. And that assures you that regardless of who's on vacation or who's stuck on a plane, flying to Tulsa, whatever the case is, that we, we're going to be responsive to your needs, and you're going to have the expertise you need to get great advice. The other hallmark of our firm is that we work incredibly hard to make sure that our clients get outstanding financial results. And we look forward to the opportunity to do that here in Bel Air as well. So, thank you so much for the opportunity.
Thank you.
With that, there's no other questions. I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a motion to select Columbia Capital as the city's new financial advisor and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
We have first and second, are there any other questions or comments?
I just want to thank him for the background and for sharing and coming. Thank you.
Do you get to drive home tonight?
I do.
Okay. Well, let's vote and get you out of here. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Congratulations. We look forward to working with you, and we'll let you get on the road. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
The next, item C, is a consideration of accepting a quote from AVI. This is in the amount of $11,072. This is for audio and video upgrades to improve Cable Channel 7 programming, as well as the website video streaming of council meetings. This is something we talked about quite a bit at, I think it was at our last workshop and maybe the one before that. Just with the new IT person, with us having more IT dedication from staff, we've got stuff that haven't been updated in like eleven or twelve years, which might as well be a century in technology age. And one thing, and I think we've all heard the complaints about not being able to hear or the video or being behind or something. This is, and we've done the best we can with what we have. Now's the time, finally, some, you know, there's some monies there that have kind of freed up. And we think it's important, as we continue with all of our transparency, to let everybody know. I know, like I said, council and citizens both have been long concerned with this. Changing software companies would cost exceedingly more, and why the recommendation is to update our current system. This upgrade, like I said, is going to allow for much better quality, improved sound, and more opportunities for content, videos, and ultimately improve the video streaming on the website as well. And this, again, is something I would recommend moving forward with the purchase to address the concerns of our citizens.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the quote from AVI for audio and video upgrades in the amount $11,072 and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
First and second, are there questions or comments? All, oh, go ahead.
I was just going to say, I checked with my local authority in this area, and he said that's real good equipment and very common in the industry.
Yeah, I appreciate staff going out and getting the good ones.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to comment that the $11,072 may seem like a large amount of money to citizens who are watching, but we have, as the mayor indicated, received many complaints about the video and the audio on this particular, with the equipment that we have. And while it's an expenditure, I think it's a very necessary expenditure, and so I will vote in favor of it.
Thank you so much for that comment. Do you know other questions or comments? I'll call the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Now, go get it tomorrow, because we're all excited. This is stuff we have been waiting for, to be able to, yeah, be able to, it's just like, I think Councilmember O'Donnell even said tonight, she's looking for something online, and it popped up, the budget. So, it's out there for the public, and this is, as we're moving forward, this is just great to have, so. Okay, going to move on. A consideration of an agreement with the Villas at Elk Creek. This is their, the homeowners association. This relates specifically to city-owned lots for dues and bulk watering with that. And just want to let you know, when the developer of Elk Creek declared bankruptcy, the development was taken over by Stillwater National Bank. Then the Elk Creek Four stepped in to purchase the remaining lots, except for nine that were along the wetlands. And the bank gave those lots basically to the city so we could control the development and assist the developer. And then what happened was, we kind of had an agreement where the Elk Creek Homeowners Association requested the city pay the HOA dues, but however, needed their reserves maintained as well. And what we want to do is want to certainly cooperate. This is kind of a entryway to our city, and it's a beautiful addition, and we want it to maintain that way. What we did is we agreed as a city to cover the cost of water up to the amount of dues owed for the nine city lots. Kind of a trade-off there. Since that time, since we had that agreement, what's happened is developers have since taken control of the HOA and wanted to put the utilities in their name. This new agreement with the HOA states that the city will waive the water fees outstanding from last year and in return will not be responsible for HOA dues while the lots are in the city's name, and the HOA will pay all water fees going forward. And I think that speaks volumes just for that development as it continues to grow and gain new members, that they're able and willing to do this. They approved the agreement, and again, I would recommend that council accept it.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I appreciate that explanation for the public. And I'd like to make a motion to approve the agreement with the Villas at Elk Creek, HOA, and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
We have two seconds. Questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I'm not voting, why did I say that? I'm sorry. Opposed, I meant. I did not just vote, I meant to say opposed. I was thinking too far ahead. Motion passes four to nothing. All voted aye, right?
Yes.
Just for the record.
I think you said aye for me because I was thinking.
I'm sorry. I just want to clarify that we.
I'd just like to say one thing. When I was reading and thinking about this, you know, with the precious commodity we have in water, and just thinking of this HOA now taking over these huge water bills, I would just like to encourage anybody who has any say about even your own yard, try to plant something that doesn't require as much water. I mean, we can all do research and find out. There are certain plants that are more native to the land and don't require as much water. I mean, we all think we have to have a certain variety of grass that just drinks up water like crazy, and we should be thinking more about being responsible about our environment and saving ourselves some money, saving water for the future, and really looking at plant material that doesn't require as much. And I think they're doing a great job with the development, and I'm really glad we were able to come to this agreement. It's a great thing for the city and the homeowners association. But I, and I'm, so I'm not just talking to them, I'm just talking about in general. I, myself, need to do the same thing, to look for something that doesn't require as much water.
I'd just like to point out, too, the berm, as you go into Elk Creek, did a different, I think that was a couple of years ago, wasn't it? Where they, and part of that was, again, for the conservation and kind of make it look a little native. I know at the very beginning, some people said, "What in the world are you doing?" And it's all, no, now, now you see, and it's beautiful.
It's really beautiful.
So, yeah, we were doing it. Appreciate the comments on that. Next, we will move on to, the next thing before council is consideration of a letter of support for the Tiger Grant application. At our last meeting, we had a gentleman with the Wichita-Cedric County Metropolitan Area Planning Department. He gave a presentation regarding the Wichita/WSU Tiger Grant application for street and bus improvements around the campus of Wichita State University. And as Bel Air and Wichita have partnered with several projects, created a positive working relationship, and many residents work or attend that campus, you know, which the project would benefit, we felt it would be appropriate to draft a letter of support for this project. The city could also dedicate funds to help with the local match, if the council so desires. However, I'll just say, you know, in light of some of our recent proposed budget cuts, I think it'd be kind of difficult to set aside money for such a project, even though we truly do support its vision. However, I do highly recommend that the city submit the proposed letter of support without the financial contribution, but that we do back this application.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr., oh, we'll go to Mrs. Martin.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the letter of support for the city of Wichita WSU Tiger Grant application and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
Any questions or comments? I would say I appreciate, I think, this actually originated, Councilmember McDonald attended a WAMPO meeting, if I'm not mistaken, where this presentation was given, he brought it to Bel Air, and this is something we're certainly, even though it's, again, for those listening at home, even though you're thinking, "Why in the world do you support something at 21st and Oliver?" We do have a ton of kids and a ton of people who, citizens who work there. And so, this is a letter, and certainly we'll say that the city is in full support, and I think we can, in a second here. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? There you go. Okay. Okay. Next, we want to talk about the land bank, which we heard earlier. Mr. White mentioned, they've kind of spearheaded that. I think I mentioned earlier, I was in Garden City this morning for some work events and listening to their local radio, and their city manager was on, and that's one of the things they're doing tonight, is going into a land bank and just how this is really set up for cities. There's cities all over us, left and right. I don't want to use the word "taking advantage of it," but they are. They're taking advantage of the opportunity, not taking advantage of the people, you know, whatever. We presented the material on this land bank. This was, oh, golly, it was a workshop, was that two or three, might have been three or four workshops ago. And just to speak on the land bank, the primary purpose is allowing the city more flexibility as a landowner, which unfortunately we are, and also allows the land to become tax-exempt. The city pays roughly $24,000 in property taxes each year for all the land owned. This is land outside of the industrial park. And $7,000, only $7,000 of that comes back to Bel Air. So, the net savings, or so the net savings actually would be $17,000 annually to our city if this is adopted this evening. We proposed a 2016 budget with certain expenditures, cuts, and general fund to allow for a cushion. And enacting such an entity would give the city an additional $17,000 each year to make equipment upgrades that may have been cut or, for some reason, weren't able to be fit in the budget for that year. The land bank, it's going to work just like the PBC, which owns the industrial park land. And we do have a PBC where there are three members who serve on that. I'll just make a sidebar here. Peggy O'Donnell, myself, and former mayor Gary O'Neill serve on the PBC board. I and the council, I and the entire council, all of us, would be the board of the land bank. Meetings would be open to the public, just like the PBC. Land sale revenues would go specifically to pay down the debt. And several members of Congress stated at the last council meeting, things are changing at the county and state that may impact our budget. We're hearing that Cedric County is raising the jail fees, which we pay. They're cutting, and they're also cutting funds to our senior center. The school district is raising its mill levy to bring in more and more due to some cuts at the state level. However, we will have no budget increase, and staff has even cut more from the proposed 2016 budget. So, there's no need for the taxpayers of Bel Air to subsidize, in my opinion, the other taxing entities with more tax revenue than we already pay. Bel Air is carrying the burden of holding this land for economic development that benefits all taxing units. Yet, no other taxing agency is helping carry this debt, it's just us. So, with that, I would recommend the council approve the land bank to help save citizens $17,000 a year.
Mr. Mayor, it was encouraging to hear our financial advisor also say that he is familiar with this. So, as we move forward, if we have other questions, I was encouraged to hear that. And I do know it's a vehicle a lot of cities are using. So, I would like to make a motion to approve an ordinance concerning the adoption of Chapter Two, Article 10 of the municipal code of Bel Air, Kansas, establishing a land bank in conformance with KSA 12-5901. I don't know how to say that, within the city of Bel Air, Kansas. And authorize the mayor to sign. I should be, because I use the legal sector, but I can't remember, so. Is that okay to the attorney? Okay.
I'll second.
I'll second.
We have first and second, are there questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I do have a question, about the land bank board of trustees, the appointment term and dissolution, if we're ex officio, the members of council are ex officio members of that board, and there's going to be one additional member appointed by the mayor who should be a non-voting member, is it, are we limited to that? Can we, can the mayor, for example, appoint a member who should, who would be a voting member?
At this point, the way the ordinance is written, you'd follow the ordinance, the ordinance only permits the appointment of one additional person. If, as the land bank develops, the governing body determines that it wants to modify the way the board of trustees of the land bank is set up, it's a simple modification of the ordinance. So, the governing body, acting as the governing body of the city, goes back and modifies the ordinance, and the way we've written this ordinance, the land bank is incorporated into chapter two of the code, so just like we can do, as we do an annual update of all of the sections of the code, once a year, this is something that we'll look, you'll look at all the time, but it's something that you might want to do, some modification of, especially after, you know, some time passes and the governing body begins to determine the best way for the land bank to function in Bel Air, and that may take a year or two.
The reason I asked that question, I was speaking with a citizen today who was concerned about the fact that there were no members of the community involved, except those who were elected to the council and to want appointee, and the point that was being made to me was that we have people in the city who have great experience in many different areas that would be pertinent to this land bank committee, and that's the reason I asked the question, and I thank you for the answer.
Well, there's an additional answer, then, with that clarification, and that is, as once you meet as the board of trustees, you might decide, because you've, the ordinance authorizes you to develop an advisory board, which would be those citizens of the city who have expertise in land, so you can have one advisory committee, you might think, boy, I want to advise your committee of commercial people, advise your committee of real estate people, it gives you the flexibility to develop groups that will be able to advise you on these specific issues. However, we've initially presented the land bank to you with the governing body as the voting members, because it's the land bank who will be selling, and at this point, who will be selling the land, and at this point, I think we're all more comfortable with the governing body being responsible in the final, for the final say of selling that land. Again, if after a year, the governing body determines that they want to handle it differently, you have that ability to modify it, but initially, the role of the public is expanded, because you have the, this ability to create advisory committees.
Thank you.
Additionally, this is my favorite topic, this thing is so cool, the Kansas Legislature modified the land banking law effective July 1, so I gave you this report back in May, and subsequent to that, we've got a new element of land banking finance, and how that's actually going to play out, I'm not exactly positive, but I think it's just going to be the coolest thing ever, because it allows the land bank, for all land that's in a land bank, to reamortize specials. As you were just watching your presentation on the budget, Michelle was talking about the amount of money this city spends on specials, and the reason the legislature created land banks for cities and counties back in 2009, subsequent to the great crash, was to give governing bodies the ability to take in land and rehab it, clean up title, make sure it doesn't fail within the city, and at the same time, not take on additional debt, because it's taxpayer money. It wasn't working quite the way they needed it to, so Gary, Junction City in Gary County went back and lobbied, successfully lobbied, for cities to have the authority to reamortize specials, which means that while this city is going to have to pay specials upfront, because while we carry the land, we do, it may be possible for us to reamortize that, so that some, over time, some of those specials do end up coming back to the city, which at this point, we really don't have any way of doing. So, in addition to the general fund, or the general taxes that we've been discussing, I think the real cost savings in the long run is going to come back to the specials, and again, I'm really excited to see how that's going to play out.
Mr. Mayor?
I'm very glad to hear that, because I wasn't sure this was worth doing this, for the amount of money we would save each year in property taxes, because there's undoubtedly going to be some expenses that we're going to have to pay to transfer the land and all that, I don't know exactly how much that would be, and so, you know, I'd like to know more about costs in addition to savings, but with the, with what you just said, I think it may be much more worthwhile than just the property taxes, and I have mixed emotions about this, because I'm not the parched earth type of believer, like some people are, when it comes to government. I'm a very strong believer in government, I think government is good, we couldn't have a civilized society without government, and I don't believe in starving the beast, as some people do. I voted for the decrease in our budget, because I thought it was prudent, it was doable, we had a very good year last year, we're going to have even more money in our budget next year, so I think that what we chose to do with our own budget was very prudent and careful. I think some of the other budget cuts that we've seen in the state are draconian almost, and so I don't like the fact that we're taking money away from the fire department, or the public schools, the county, the other entities that are taxing entities, so I have a conflict in my own mind about saving on taxes that are paid to other entities that our citizens use, it's kind of like Robin Peter to pay Paul, you know, but I think under the circumstances, I'm going to vote in favor of this, I think it's a prudent thing to do, and what you just said really helped me to feel better about it.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Thank you, Ramona, I didn't mean to cut you off, sorry. That's fine, I was... I just wanted to kind of piggyback on what Mr. McDonald said, too, about you talked to someone who was concerned, and under section 2.10.5, one of the things that I think might help people in the community is that the treasurer is going to be the non-voting appointee, so if anybody would be worried that it's just the council, there would be, none of us would be that treasurer, if you would see that, so I think that is even better for transparency, and I appreciate what our attorney said on being able to save all that money that we are currently having to pay out on this land, if we could find a way to help us on that, this would be a wonderful vehicle, so thank you for that update.
Again, doing this for Bel Air, so...
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
I think this is probably a good idea, and I would be all for it, but is there a deadline on this? Do we have to vote on this tonight as an ordinance, or could we table it to give Mr. Lee a chance to express his opinions on it, being he's not able to attend our meeting tonight?
Well, we have a first and second to approve...
You just have a first and second on the vote, sir.
Right, no, to, the motion was to approve, which is currently before us.
You have a motion on the table, and you can't, parliamentary procedure, a motion to table is not, is not a secondary motion, so if the motion to approve fails, at that point, you can introduce a motion to table, if you would like to, or introduce a motion to bring it back, but there's currently a motion on the table.
And I appreciate that, that, I think that the overwhelming, kind of, just, I'm gauging here, was that it was in favor from comments that have been made here from the bench, and I think also Mr. Lee did mention when we talked about this back in May or June, that he, you know, anytime, we can save money for the citizens, he was for it, but I do appreciate that, so...
Well, Mr. Mayor, I have another question of the attorney, then. If I wanted to ask that question before the motion was made, are we able to do that? Because it's my understanding, you were supposed to wait for the motion to be voted on, but I don't understand the deal about it being an ordinance. Before, before Peggy made it and Ramona seconded, I should have spoken up then to ask for it to be tabled?
Yes, one, under the rules of parliamentary procedure, when the mayor asks, is there, does anyone want to make a motion, whoever makes a motion first, that's the motion that is initially acted on. If, at that point, you had wanted to make the original motion to table the action until a future date, that would have been the appropriate time to do that, or if after this, if this motion should fail, and you wanted to take that action, at that point, you could, but once a motion's on the table, there are two or three secondary motions that can come up, but a motion to table is not one of them.
I, I know it's not going to be tabled, because I'm going to vote for it, but I just thought it'd be nice to give him a chance to express his opinion, because some things have done in the past that he didn't get a chance to speak on.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, and I, and I want to say, I appreciate Ms. Martine's point, my only thing is, I always think there might be, the next meeting, one of us might not be here, we don't always have that luxury, I wish we did, that we're all here, but...
And also, it's my understanding that even if we vote on this and say, yes, we're going to do it, we have some discretion in when we actually implement this, so if Mr. Lee has any issues with it, we could take that up later.
Why don't we go ahead and vote, and then we can maybe ask that very question at our workshop, and probably have an answer real quickly, is everybody okay with that? I'm gonna...
Good point.
Let's do that.
Martine, thank you.
We can do that, okay, it does call for a roll call vote, Dr. Becker?
Aye.
Guy McDonald?
Aye.
Betty Martine?
Aye.
Peggy O'Donnell?
Aye.
Passes four, nothing, and we will, for the record, put that on as a brief agenda item at the workshop, to allow that, for, we'll talk about the enactment of that, okay? Fantastic. Next is our workshop, which is August the 11th at 6:30 PM, I thought we were going to move those to Mondays, to the 10th.
Dog party.
Well, you can't, because the pool party.
Oh, the 10th, that's right, that's right, that's right, that's right, that's right, and I even said that, didn't I, at the last meeting?
Yes, you did.
I did. Okay, we're going to have a workshop on Tuesday, the 11th, if that still works for everybody. Long day, sorry about that, yes.
Mr. Mayor, I, I don't think that I'll be able to come, but I will watch it on TV, like you had that opportunity, because I know that we can't move it, so, that's fine. I'll try, but there's a very good chance I won't.
And this has the makings of a pretty, pretty easy, simple...
Right, because the budget's, we were basically done with it, yeah.
Right, that was the main thing, so, but we can certainly do that, so I would imagine this could be a pretty short one, too, I don't want to say that, because we're... Because we always say that, and obviously...
Last time, there's three hours.
Yeah, never, ever want to cut us short either on that, so, yeah, we're going to go and continue with the workshop for August 11th, sorry that you won't be able to make it, we'll wait, and if I, if I hear that, you know, someone else isn't able to make it, we'll maybe reconsider, but with one.
No, we're fine.
So with that, I will entertain a, or does anybody have a need for an executive session? I do not. I'll be at our next one, so, the, then with that, I will take, accept a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned. Eight oh five, okay.